I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting, January 11, 2021 of the Mobile County Commission. We begin our meeting with invocation from Minister Queen Gregory, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and remain standing.
Let us bow our heads. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come as humbly as we know how, first and always to tell you thank you for your goodness and your mercy that we know follows us all the days of our lives. As we leave 2020 and embark on this year of 2021, Lord, we pray for wisdom to continue with our commissioners. We pray for wisdom for Commissioner Maseria-Ludgood. We pray for wisdom for Commissioner Connie Hudson, and we pray for wisdom for Commissioner Randall Dewitt, knowing that the number 21 biblically is wisdom. And as they lead the Mobile County Commission, Lord, we pray that they will continue with the wisdom from 2020 into 2021 for the constituents of all of their districts and also for the employees of the Mobile County Commission. And, Lord, we seal this prayer in your name, in the name of Jesus, and in agreement, we all say, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any speakers?
Good morning, Commissioners. No, we do not have any speakers.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hodge.
Number one, approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the November 16, 2020, and November 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve consent to Penn Tail Properties LLC's petition to City of Mobile to vacate unnamed right-of-way abutting property on Halls Mill Road.
So moved.
Second.
Number four, approve accepting non-exclusive 30 feet, 30 feet with ingress egress easement agreement from Halls Mill Road to the county's property along a distance of approximately 500 feet, conditioning Penn Tail's property LLC, securing vacation of unnamed right-of-way abutting its property on Halls Mill Road.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve Treasury Consulting Services Agreement with PFM Management LLC for preparation of a banking services request for proposals and delivery of analysis of the proposals submitted in response thereto for the sum of $9,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve amending the fee schedule for the professional services agreement dated May 27, 2020, with J.G. Bagging to include visual assessments to identify deteriorated paint and associated surface area in support of rental assistance activities and to authorize the President of the Commission to execute an amendment on behalf of Mobile County.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve contract with E.R. Dixon Parent Teacher Organization amount of $29,000 from District Two funds to purchase technology equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in amount $8,500 from District Two funds for upgrades to the outdoor educational center at Willmer Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve application of T-Boy C Store for lounge retail liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve application of T-Boy C Store for off-premise retail table wine license.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve sponsorship with the New Lines Park Tennis Association, Inc., in amount of $3,500 from District One funds for its annual Lines Turkey Day Tennis Classic.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, approve amendment to the sub-reception agreement with Legal Services Alabama, Inc., to increase the amount of funding from up to $165,000 to $86,000, to up to $520,000 of community development block rent coronavirus relief funds, to include provision of subsistence payments for mortgage, rental, utility obligations to clients at risk of facing homelessness, and to incorporate HUD recommended subrogation requirements subject to final legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve authorizing contract with Pace Analytical Services, Inc., for professional environmental sampling and testing services for the period January 11, 2021 through January 11, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Number 14, approve contract with Thompson Engineering to provide professional engineering services for project number extension of affluent force main from Valabatry WWTF pending legal review.
So moved.
Second.
Number 15, approve authorizing advertisement of a request for proposals for professional forestry services.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, authorizing $500 sponsorship of the Alabama Coastal Foundations 2021 Sustainability Summit to be paid from the Environmental Services Department budgeted funds.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve assignment of CDC Engineers for Professional Engineering Services to Mobile Metro Jail Smoke Purge Ventilation System Upgrade. Work will consist of the review of existing building smoke purge system, provide updated sequence of operations for each smoke purge area, and provide all mechanical and electrical engineering required to develop specifications and statement of work. The proposed fee is based on the time and material with an estimated maximum of $25,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve rejecting all bids and authorize advertisements to rebid project renovation of property at 355 North Ann Street, bids exceeded available budget.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, approve awarding contract to Hugis Plumbing and Utility Contractors for African Town Heritage House for a total bid of $1,324,500.
So moved.
Second.
Number 20, approve amending the 2015 capital improvement plan as follows. Reallocate the balance from Metro Jail Sliding Cell Doors to Community Corrections Building. The amount of the, to be transferred is $115,898.80. This amendment real allocates the remaining balance from the completed project to the Community Corrections Project.
So moved.
I know we discussed some of this the other day, but I think this is the second or third time that some issues have come up with that building, and I guess my question is back to what I asked originally. This stuff wasn't figured in the original cost of that building and that project over there, because it seems like we're adding stuff to it almost monthly, if anyone knows the answer to that.
Tyler can respond to that.
I think the initial, there was close to a half a million dollars that we voted on here a while back that was dealing with the parking lot, and I guess my question then was, was that not in the original contract? And I guess my question again today is the same thing.
Commissioner, when we funded the original project, we, we were on a limited budget. As you probably know now, that was about five years ago. We included minimal parking lot improvements, mostly just ADA, and this is a extension of that project to go ahead and build a full parking lot for employees and visitors. The thing we bid on a while back was awarding that parking lot project. This is just allocating CIP funding to the project.
Question, is this amount to a change order?
No, ma'am. This is, this is the same money, this same project, this is just moving funding around.
That's, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
And what is this money going to be used for? The trans, it looks like they're reallocating money from Metro Jail to this building. For what purpose?
The original funding source was a 116 fund for building improvements. We can use that for minor projects, and we're reallocating some of the 2015 CIP, I believe, that we have a time constraint on. Is that right, Dana?
Yes, Tyler, that's correct. What happened is that the original amount that was approved for community corrections, like you said, was coming out of 116. That has a little less restrictions on it, and since, you know, our idea is that when we have capital projects, to really use capital improvement funds, and so this is basically the same thing as he previously stated, that you approved a couple of weeks ago. You approved awarding the bid for the construction of the parking lot. Initially, he used the less restrictive funds, but after we spoke, it was more beneficial to use the more restrictive funds that could specifically be used for this purpose, and so we're just basically shifting the money. So it's a project you've already approved, we're just changing the funding source for it, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Number 21, approve amending the 2015 capital improvement plan as follows. Create project parking lot for community corrections. The estimated cost of this project is $481,418. This amendment creates project parking lot for the community corrections.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, take the following actions on bid.
So moved.
Second.
23 was voted at the conference. 24, approve amending 2015 capital improvement plan to add the following project in estimated costs. Miracle Road Construction and CEI, $350,000. This amendment creates project Miracle Road Construction and CEI.
So moved.
Second.
I thought we changed the name of the road.
Commissioners, it will be known as Michael Speaks Way.
Should this not reflect that?
We can, if you would like. I believe we're getting ready to change the name of the road on the title sheet of the construction plans to Michael Speaks Way also.
Whatever the legal name of the road is now is probably what we should use.
Probably correct. We can change that to Michael Speaks Way. Did we?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Number 25, approve accepting an award from the U.S. Department of Treasury for an amount to be determined for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program as authorized in the Consolidated Appropriation Act of 2021. Acceptance is required by January 12, 2020. We have not been officially notified, but unofficially, it looks like we're going to get 12.3 million.
So moved.
Second.
26, approve memorandum of understanding with Perfect Partners of Mobile to house felines at the Mobile County Animal Shelter pending transport to Atlanta for adoption for a term of three months commencing January 15, 2021, and ending April 15, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
27 was voted at the conference.
Question, back on 25, the 12.3 million, are we, is, do we have the program set up and ready to utilize those funds, Nair?
We are still trying to, we still have to see what the fine terms are that the Treasury is going to provide to us. We have another rental assistance program, so we're hoping that we can do the math on that with a few changes. In fact, this one, this particular program allows payment of rent of 12 months, three years, as well as another three months. So we can give rental assistance of up to 15 months with a, you know, caviar to them. Whereas the program that we have in the government allows up to six months rental assistance. So in all honesty, this is, this gives much more to the, to the client side. We will be tweaking some of our programs. We are going to be working with some more partners because 12, no, we have to obligate this 12.3 million, 12.33 something million by September 13th of 2021, obligate. And we have to actually expend, I expect all that money by December 31st of 2021. That is, so that is quite a bit of money to be spent within a year. That's about 1. something million, about a million dollars per month that has to actually go out of the door. So we are going to be partnering with other agencies to be able to spend this money. The need is there, there's no doubt about it. The need is there.
Well, if we can accomplish it in that period of time, if not, hopefully we'll have the option of an extension on that period.
We have to be told now, obviously, right now this is the very beginning, but hopefully we will be given an extension should we not be able to spend.
How will it be advertised? Will there be a need to make sure that this information is, is advertised publicly for people to?
Absolutely, absolutely. If this is just preliminary portion of it, I think we will start advertising all things we need to bring about. We have already spoken to several agencies. We've had tons of home calls from different agencies who heard about this program, and we could have a meeting, one of these meetings, to see who will be able to come in and participate, be part of the process in this. We had a webinar with the Treasury folks, and they were, they said that they would be able to, it would be who wants to work with those who have already had experience with federal funds and rental housing. So that kind of narrows the agencies that we can go with, but we do have agencies that have that experience, and I encourage that they are interested in offering to us.
Very good, thank you.
While we're back on that, who will be, who will this money be available to, for the, to file for the grant? Is it only for the tenant, or is there going to be an opportunity for, say, a landlord who has a tenant who hasn't filed for any kind of grant like this, who's not being paid their rent? Will it be available for the, the actual landlord to be able to apply to get funds for back, back rent?
Interestingly, this is one of the, this is the great thing about this program. It does allow landlords to also apply, but they have to do it in concert with a tenant. So yes, it will allow landlords to apply, but initially it will be with the tenants.
Okay.
Certainly landlords can apply.
Okay. Number 28, approve amending the 2019 capital improvement plan to increase the estimate, estimated cost of project African Town Heritage House by 700,000.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. This amendment increases estimated cost of African Town Heritage House by 700,000 and decreases the 2019 CIP District One unnamed projects by 700,000.
So moved.
Second.
Number 29, recommend approving reimbursable agreement for supplying water to property owner in accordance with the right-of-way negotiations associated with county project with Mobile Water Sewer and Fire Protection Authority for facilities in conflict with Sunset Road Bridge replacement. Total estimated cost to Mobile County is $8,198.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, recommend awarding bid for project Glaze Road Nelson Road and Rainy Drive to John G. Walton Construction Company, Inc., for their low bid in amount of $894,457.77.
So moved.
Second.
Number 31, recommend awarding the bid for project Mavaco Loop Road West, S&R Road, and Small Road to HCL Contracting LLC for their low bid in amount of $506,109.49.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, recommend acceptance of the county engineer's written report on the fiscal year 2020 Mobile County Transportation Plan expenditures. Preliminary engineering costs for the noted projects are funded by the county's general fund. Construction and, and construction inspection costs are funded by the county's Rebuild up Alabama Fund and the Federal Aid Exchange Fund provided by the Act 2019-2.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioners, may I insert a brief summary of the engineer's report?
Please.
Rebuild Alabama Act, which is Act 2019-2, provides funding for expenditures on materials, construction, and the inspection of construction of roadway projects. For FY 2020, Mobile County expended $463,528 on material for resurfacing roads. The status of the three projects is as follows. Soli Road was bid on October 14, 2020. The resurfacing is currently 65% complete and is estimated to be finalized by the end of 2021, February 2021. Sam Lewis Road was bid on September 30, 2020. The resurfacing should start any day and is estimated to be complete by the end of February 2021. Dawes Road from Scott Derry Loop Road northward up to Cottage Hill Road will utilize the available Federal Aid Exchange Funds and is estimated to bid around the end of March of this year. In accord with Act 2019-2, we would request that the entire engineer's report that has been provided to you be entered into the commission meeting minutes, and we'll ensure that the engineer's report is posted on the county's website. That'll, that'll complete our responsibilities in accord with the act. Thank you.
Very good.
Number 33, recommend approving preliminary and final plan of Sunny Ruth Acres and approving preliminary and final plan of McDonald Hill Subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Number 34, recommend approving right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 5 in amount of $1,000, Track 6 in amount of $615,000, Track 7 in amount of $425,000, Track 8 in amount of $710,000, Track 20 in amount of $520,000, Track 29 in amount of $1,700,000, Track 39 in amount of $250,000, Track 40 in amount of $1,105,000, Track 44 in amount of $250,000, Track 45 in amount of $390,000, and Track 48 in amount of $2,0275 for project Joyce Circle Lloyd Road and Williams Road, gray, drained, base, and paved.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner, we have one to add on. First add-on, authorize CDP, and we do have a number now, 107-21, any amount of $13,212.9 to be paid to the Hurricane Diesel Performance for engine repair for the Casa de Diva, Diva Volunteer Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me. Someone has signed in to address the commission, Mrs. A. Murray, to discuss land disturbance for O'Fallon subdivision. I've just come, I've been here a couple of times. I've not had a chance to meet with Mr. Dewitt. I'm in O'Fallon subdivision.
In what subdivision, I'm sorry?
O'Fallon.
Okay.
That's your area, off of Cottage Hills and, oh, Lord, I can't think, McFarland. At any rate, I've come continuously asking about the approval versus what is being done. At this point, the land disturbance has been completed with the pipes. The land, the land elevation now is not, it was disturbed, but it was not put back to what it was supposed to be. There is almost a cliff in the backyard. My land is elevated in one part where they didn't disturb, and where they disturbed, the elevation goes down. And not only that, they have also, in essence, made a joining of subdivisions. So Cottage Park is now open to my sub, to my backyard. The fences have not been put back. The actual area that was expanded, the detention pond that was expanded, is not enclosed as of yet. So it is particularly, it is particularly impacts me because it is my backyard that's opened. So my concern is, the people that were given approval for the land disturbance are using their, your authority to say that what they're doing is what you approved. And so I keep coming back to make sure that there is harmony between what you approved versus what is being done. And I just thought if a land is disturbed, it's to be made whole again. I, I didn't, I didn't know a disturbance allowed them to change, to, to change and pack the way the land was before they disturbed it. That, that is all I have to say.
I'm, I'm positive that someone here can address your concern. I'm not aware of your concern, but I'm sure that Matthew can. But me personally, if you'll hang around for a few minutes, I'd like to get some more details from you, because I personally would like to come out. I, I'm not aware of the situation. This is the first time that I've been made aware of it, but I would like to personally come out and take a look at it with possibly Matthew and possibly whoever else needs to come with me, if it's Neil or Ricky or whoever, but I, I certainly want to get personally involved, if that's okay with you.
Yes, thank you. That's all I can ask. Thank you so much. And I know you have no, you can't guarantee anything, it's just for you to see.
Absolutely, I want to see this.
Yes, sir.
As far as what was approved, we, the engineer takes responsibility for overseeing what is, what has been, so I haven't been in her backyard to know whether or not they have constructed what was approved. I can tell you, the last time she was here, she asked for some, some fencing and stuff, and we went out and did what was within our authority to be done to try to secure the area, but beyond that, we don't have a lot of control. It, it really becomes an issue between private property owners, and, and between them, it's more of a civil issue than anything we have authority over.
And that's fine.
This is all related to a lawsuit, and so it's, you know.
It's what now?
It, it's, it's still all related to a lawsuit.
Okay.
That has gone on, and so we're, we have to be very careful with how we deal with it.
Yeah. Understandable, but I'd still like to go.
I appreciate that, sir. As I said, when you guys gave approval to disturb it, I just thought that if you move my fence to, to disturb it, that you, you put, and as I said, those subdivisions are now open. There's, there's no longer one subdivision. You can, Cottage Park is now open into my backyard.
Yeah. And I understand your frustration with it, and I'm certainly still willing, I, I do want to come and put my eyes on it personally with some people that can help me through the litigation. I guess there's litigation somewhere with this, but we can still look at it, and like you said, I can't make promises, but I do want to look at it myself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Have any comments, announcements?
Oh, I have a comment to make. So, you know, a couple weeks back, we addressed with DRC, with the hurricane debris problem that we were having in Mobile County. I think the media addressed that as well. But, you know, I, and when we called them down here, it was to complain, but I want to, I want to say this, and I know there probably, I have a few myself still that I have to get out today to them, but they've been very responsive since that meeting, and I just wanted to say, and I know they're not here, I probably, I called them down here to complain, I probably should have called them down here to thank them, but, and I'm, I'm sure somebody will call me today and say, well, my debris's still out, but they've been very responsive in my district, for sure. I don't know about you two, you guys, but they've really picked up the pace in doing a great job, it appears right now.
We, we've seen some improvement.
Yeah, good, okay.
Anything else?
That's all.
Number 36, approve request for motion to adjourn until January 25, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
You got it. You got it. I'm just going to sit over here and let you two.
We can all take turns.